Today is Tuesday, January sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four. The time is six o'clock. I'd like to call the regular village board, meeting order. Myself, Mike Kapper is present.
Donnie Curry, President.
Caleb Garn.
Chris Duvall.
It's real.
Gotcha.
Brad Cole. Public hearing, you want to do your presentation for like account plans?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Bry Mylson. I'm a planner with MSA Professional Services. Been helping out with the completion of this document from the beginning of last year with the Community Action Plan. And then creating and actually writing the document so that it aligns with the state statutory requirements. We had our joint workshop with the Planning Commission and members of the board that were able to attend that evening. And kind of finalize those last couple edits from some photos to removing the educational image statistic that had a massive margin of error from census data. So we just got rid of it as well as a couple of typos from the action plan. So all of that has been updated since November, and that is the document that we are bringing forward for adoption this evening. Really, the overarching vision of this is the one that was written through that Community Action Plan process by your community members. We haven't changed any of that, which is that Village of Somerset is a vibrant, family-friendly community that has a song, strong sense of pride. Somerset has a variety of recreational amenities available, ample public infrastructure and facilities to support growth and good working relationships with the school district, county, and surrounding township. While the village will grow over time, the community will continue to celebrate its history and maintain its small town charm. So that vision, as we move into the next ten to twenty years, is the backbone of this document. As you know, this is your kind of living guiding document as the board does its annual budgeting and other capital planning annually. Those overarching vision broken into seven community elements as required by state statute, parks recreation, transportation, intergovernmental collaboration, housing, just to name a few. All of those policies or all of those goals were then driven down into those policies and the action implementation table that is kind of in the appendices of the document, that was all those nitty gritty, nitty gritty ones we went over in November with short-term, long-term, or ongoing kind of prioritization. And as well as the future land use element, that is the other kind of guiding force to help your decisions as development and potential annexation comes through for the village. And that's, that's kind of my general overview of it. I'm happy to answer any other questions within this public hearing or your regular agenda item.
Can you go back to your map that you had circled? For your territory?
So this map is created from the extraterritorial jurisdiction that the village has already been doing for plat reviews and other reviews that come towards to the planning commission that isn't in the current village limit. This is also dictated by state statute as to what that extension limit is. So that's just, that's the border that is created from, I think it's a two-mile radius, maybe a mile and a half, yeah, mile and a half.
Come back here in a couple minutes.
Awesome.
Close public hearing, you can call a regular board meeting in order.
If anybody wants to speak.
Yeah, is there, I guess there's anybody else that wants to speak for the public hearing part of it? You can stand for the pledge of allegiance. Public comment on agenda items. Two minutes per person, up to fourteen minutes per topic. If anybody wants to speak for public comment, now's the chance.
You know, I just got this map here tonight.
Dennis, can you come up to them? What do you? You say your name.
Dennis Dunne. I just got a copy of this map tonight. And I talked to Bobby a few times. I know the town's going to grow. And it's going to grow to the north. And I talked to Bobby a couple of times, and I just want to make sure that they have the ability to hook up with Seventy Second Street in the future.
And you guys don't know, Dennis is referring to the Pine Vale plat that that's looking to get approved for tonight.
It's it's a mile and a half from Ninetieth to Two O Fifth. And there's going to be limited access to the highway. Probably only one access will be given by the state. Which means you're going to have to have access probably multiple times off of Eightieth. And then also too, as you get to the north, the lake becomes a factor. And there's going to be a half mile where you're not going to be able to get to Eightieth. So it's going to be the first mile coming from the south that you'll be able to get access out to Eightieth. So my concern is, is you know, twenty years down the road is going to happen pretty quick. Maybe it sounds like a lot today, but it's going to come and go quick. You've got a hundred and some lots going in back there with the potential to have you name it, another five hundred. So I think it's pretty important that La Grandeur somehow be like a main road, a main throughway. I am not, by no means suggesting it should travel straight. No way am I suggesting that. But it should be a throughway, probably with no stop signs. And I say that because with that many homes, the potential for that many homes, sooner or later, there's going to be kids playing in the street. One of them's going to get hit by a car. It's going to happen. It's just a matter of time. Sooner or later, that many homes, there's going to be one on fire burning. Sooner or later, there's going to be medical attention. Someone will be having a heart attack or something. So I think it's, it's a mile and a half from Ninetieth to Two Hundred and Fifth. That's a long ways. And if it's a it should be, I think, kind of like a major throughway through there with with, with, yeah, curves is fine, but not with stop signs. You know, the other roads coming off of that should be the ones that stops. I just think it's, it's a safety issue. But it's now that it's, it's got to get planned now to happen like that because it's only a matter of time. I think we all know that, she said that, you know, the town's going to grow. They built it over here. They're coming. They're coming fast. So anyway, so, and in the future, Bobby, I appreciate to get this stuff you know, more than two minutes ahead of the meeting. You know, you've talked to me a couple of times, and you could give this to me. There's an awful lot of land to the north of it. It may be farmed today. But like I said, yeah, go to Stillwater. The Shilkin farm stood there forever. Not much of it left today, is there?
Right.
So, and I think that's what's going to happen here. I think we're the next Lake Elmo. So anyway.
Thank you, Dennis.
That's what I got to say.
Thank you, Dennis. Anybody else for public comment? Now's your chance. You don't want to say twice. Public comment. Is closed. And I would like to move up ten B and then ten A. Brad, a second. Would you make a motion? I don't have to, I was bringing a red field log there. So. The Western Wisconsin Senior Center presentation, ladies, you're up.
Okay, I'm Marie Brunner, and I'm the president of the New Richmond Senior Center. And Margie, that's her with the Somerset Senior Center. So we know each other quite well and stuff, and we're presenting something just to give you some highlights of what's happening, just for your knowledge and looking for a little support. So.
Right, because you're in Speaker Columbia, we have trouble hearing that.
Okay, I will. And contrary to what you probably thought the last meeting, I'm not newly moved here, so, but you have a very good meeting. Good evening. My name is Nancy Meyer, and I'm going to share with you a little bit about myself. I'm a retired public school educator and school administrator. I've lived in Western Wisconsin since nineteen seventy-two. I'm on the New Richmond Senior Board, and I'm also involved with the VFW Freedom Park Center Grant Writing and Fundraising Committee. The VFW Freedom Park Center will serve veterans, seniors, youth, and community in Western Wisconsin. I'm here tonight representing the New Richmond Senior Board Club Fifty-Five Plus and sharing what Freedom Park will mean to our seniors in Western Wisconsin. It is going to be a senior center for seniors in Western Wisconsin. I want to make that clear. The New Richmond Senior Center actually began in nineteen seventy-three, and for fifty years, they've been without a permanent home, moving around to different locations when space was no longer available. The current location is in the New Richmond Civic Center basement. It has steep steps and one small elevator. We're limited in the number of hours and days we can use a facility, and during the last year, we have gone from a mailing list of seniors from twenty-two to over three hundred. We have had to rent space for our senior events of music, celebrations, and picnics because our current space is too small to accommodate the number of people that attend the events. Many of the seniors attending these events are from surrounding towns and villages, so we are going to all the towns and villages and presenting information about what we're involved. The Senior Board Club Fifty-Five, we developed a dare-to-dream vision when this whole project started. And the project actually has been in process for probably ten or eleven years. And I want to share with you our dare-to-dream vision. It includes parking facilities and a one-level handicap accessible building, a dedicated space for seniors and Club Fifty-Fives, an ability to have activities all week long, including music, new hobby skills, dining, celebrations, and social events, windows, we've never had windows, to observe the beautiful nature views and youth participating on the sporting fields that are over there, nature trails to enjoy, collaboration with healthcare facilities to provide welfare clinics and healthcare checks to maintain healthy living, and we now have the support from Westfield Hospital, trip planning for local areas and extended travel, coffee cafe within the center, nutritional programs that are part of extended healthcare, a commercial kitchen, intergenerational connections with youth, veterans, and community, collaboration with ADRC and the county programs, a healing garden patio and picnic area for use in warmer weather, and an opportunity to collaborate and volunteer in our community. As a retired senior, you experience many life-changing events that you were unprepared for. These include your health, independence, available activities to attend, transportation, and unfortunately, loss of friends and spouses. The Freedom Park Center will provide camaraderie, energy, and support for seniors to overcome these life-changing events. We've moved now from a dream to the reality of having a permanent center for seniors. As a nonprofit agency, we've been doing our part by raising money through grants, foundations, selling hot dogs and bread, and participating in craft sales. Thought I was done with that when my children were growing up, but here I am. We continue to need contributions and financial assistance to pay for our monthly expenses as we move to the Freedom Park Center, which is slated to open in the fall of twenty twenty-four. We thank you for any financial support you can provide to the New Richmond Senior Center Club Fifty-Five Plus. We're not asking you tonight to tell us what you feel you might be able to contribute, but we wish you would at least keep us in your thoughts and considerate contribution. We're going to hand out for sure, as I've talked more about our center. Do you have any questions for us?
Has the new center broke ground yet?
The building is up, and it is sealed. And we don't have the windows and doors, but it's sealed, so when the roof is on. It's very interesting that we're one of only three projects in the United States. It's called an innovative readiness training program, and it has Pentagon approval. And what that means is that we are training soldiers to do jobs. So we had about a thousand soldiers that came in last summer. We had soldiers the summer before. And they provide the, the army provided the equipment, and then we provided master, like, you know, master people that knew how to do like the plumbing.
Trajan.
Yeah, Trajan, correct. It's been very exciting.
Nancy, can you just give a quick thing on the trips and?
Yes, well, we've gone, I, I really want to say this, we're not the center where we just go to play cards or bingo. We've gone on several, we've, we've gone on several trips this year. We, I think we've taken like twelve to fifteen different trips. We've gone to a conservatory, we've gone to music events, we've gone to orchards. We have different people that come in, we've done cool yoga, we've done some dancing. Yeah. And we also serve congregant meals down there, but I didn't know that. The program for congregant meals isn't the thing we did on a New Year's, welcome to the beginning of the new year this year. We've done different types of parties, we've done the dances, spring fling, we've worked with the Technical College on some of our events. We do bus trips.
Thank you so much, Nancy.
We hope to go to Ireland in twenty twenty-five. There you go. Thank you. Thank you.
Ten A, discussion possible approval, Village of Somerset, twenty forty-three comprehensive plan.
Don't really have anything else to add other than what I said earlier. We haven't answered every question, though, before you guys recommend that you make the motion.
Is there anything that you want to show on the screen?
I don't think so. Like I said, we, unless you guys have any specific questions, we haven't made any major updates except for what we had discussed in November. So. Unless, well, I can talk about it more, but I know you have a really full agenda.
Does anybody have any questions? Right, thank you. We can go to. Are there any approvals on that?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yep.
Is it, is it in here?
That's all of the the fun language referencing the state statutes and that type of stuff.
You're sort of acknowledging the process that once you get this far, I mean, at the end of the, without the ordinance, for the end of the plan.
Yeah.
We got an ordinance number, Diane, or?
Be added once it goes into the.
After reviewing ordinance, after reviewing the current comprehensive plan and, and steps are taken to develop it under this, I'd like to make a motion to approve the ordinance to update and adopt the comprehensive land use planning for the Village of Somerset, St. Craig County, Wisconsin.
Donnie with the first, Caleb with the second. Any further discussion? On favor?
Aye.
Both same side.
Thank you.
All right, getting back to seven minutes of December nineteenth.
Caleb Garn, make a motion to adopt the minutes that submitted for Tuesday, December nineteenth, for meeting.
Josh, second.
Caleb with first, Josh with the second. Further discussion? On favor?
Aye.
Both same side. Committee reports, planning commission, the Pine Vale final plat. Matt, did you have anything to say?
Nothing for this evening that we've already, we've already talked through it these times, so.
One thing that's on here that when you decide to make a motion to approve it, please include in the motion an acknowledgement that the ordinance says that utilities are supposed to be fifteen feet, and the plat is at ten feet. And I think you've proved ten feet in the past. So just, if you're okay with ten feet on this one, just add that to the motion so it's in record that that reduction was approved.
That it's outside the ordinance, is that what you're saying right now? Because it's on, it's under, under fifteen feet.
Yeah, this is, this was set up for ten, and ten's pretty common. I think it was, it might have just been missed along the lines because ten is common.
Anybody want to make motion? Any consideration to what the gentleman mentioned, mentioned with regards to making La Grandeur, you know, a throughfare at some point in time, or is that kind of what the development has been presented as?
You know, it's been through the preliminary plat, preliminary plat's been approved. There are, I believe, what, four connection for future roads to connect with adjacent properties.
But right now, it's just one, one in and one out, correct?
Correct.
And that's, that's the La Grandeur stub, or let's just call it, you know, a carry-through? And those other four points are on this?
Street A, Street C.
Street A is La Grandeur carry-through, isn't it?
Yeah.
Okay. There's Street G?
Yeah, there's one stub to the north, there's one to the, to the east.
That's two.
Well, there's three there, so there's Street A's. So you have you'll have Street A that'll get a curve around, that's kind of to the north and to the, to the west there.
Yeah, that's still La Grandeur one, good.
Yeah, La Grandeur one. And then there's Street D that'll turn right there and head and terminate ultimately at the northern boundary there. And then Street C is also set up with the temporary cul-de-sac to be extended as well, which is that middle stub. So you'll have a connection here, here, and there. This one is a permanent cul-de-sac just because of the topography, you know, the, as you may recall, you know, when we talked through all this preliminary plat that, you know, it's, it's the topography is, you know, makes beautiful housing, but it, you know, presents some challenges as far as developing.
If I may speak. Sure, yeah, there's actually five connections. So one of the things, we went through a preliminary plat was to make sure that every adjacent parcel had a connection to it, and that shows in the preliminary plat, not necessarily in your final plat. La Grandeur is the one that is the main spine that comes up, and it terminates on the final plat here on the west side into that open square. And when we were going through the original engineering, we were looking at the topography and how we could get La Grandeur to be continuing connection to the north for, for the purpose that you were speaking about earlier. There's a way for that to happen, but you're limited by acquisition of land around this. There is no acquisition of land that's happened in any of the parcels around it. So you have to plan for that. That's what we worked with, with MSA and the rest of the team through preliminary plat was to make sure every single parcel had a connection, and La Grandeur has a nice thoroughfare opportunity when additional property is, is garnered and to make that continue.
And that's to the north, correct?
Yeah, that'll all come to the north.
That's not even the right map because you've got D going up, that, that ends with a cul-de-sac going through the west.
This is a final plat, this is a final plat.
Because then you get D and C that come off and two little fingers that are coming up the other way. I'm looking at this map here and that map there, they're two different maps. There's the overall plan, and then there's this final plan for the first phase.
Neighbor here is connected immediately here and every year and every year.
You had them off, and he said this came up to the adjacent landlord. Yeah, I misspoke.
Yeah, I'm available for any others. Just wanted to make sure.
Thanks, Matt. I just wanted to make sure that any of that stuff was possibly given into consideration that the gentleman brought up in all the comments. I think there's some valid points that he had brought up in there with the extension and, and that, you know, obviously, it's because of land-locking, or, you know, land acquisition. With current topography, I'm just asking, with the current topography on that, with Street A going through, is that, is that, if there was land acquisitions, you're able to carry that? That through if?
That's, that's the plan, yeah. Sure, then I mentioned the main, you know, you develop property and you wait for the next one to develop and.
Pine Vale plat with the understanding that the setbacks are at ten feet and not at current utilities. We're just, you're full utility, sorry, utilities are at ten feet and not fifteen. Donnie with the first, Josh with the second, further discussion? On favor?
Aye.
Both same size. Public works, discussion possible approval, GPS tracking, which vehicles? You know, it's my understanding is fail the public works. So it's going to be a point. Discussion possible approval, flower pots for Main Street. People, are you going to give a presentation for the power pots, or that's a build?
Um, others on the Champions Council were involved in it, but I kind of watched on the sideline. People are out of town and couldn't make this meeting, so if you
Um, people are out of town and couldn't make this meeting. So if you have questions, I, I should be able to answer them. I think, um, Donnie, you had asked for, to see the sponsorship agreement and I think a draft of one or one that, that, um. We would probably copy and edit to our needs was divided.
Again, the way I'm understanding is, uh, the pots will be donated by business or. People and then those people will take care of. Of the plants throughout the summer.
Actually, it's twofold. Um, presently there is, we're looking at purchasing twelve pot. I believe nine individuals have spoken up and will, um. Individually purchase a pot and then we're looking at the village would purchase the other three that would total the twelve. Um, those, whoever purchases the pot has the opportunity to have, um, donated by. Sign on top with their name or, or what they would like to see on it. Could be the village of Somerset or a particular name. Um, so that's phase one. Phase two then is actually adopting the pot for a season. And anybody would be able to adopt the pot for a season and that would be, uh, we. Uh, purchasing of the materials that would go into the pot and then maintaining it for the season. So I think some of the sample of things that we have seen, um. From other municipalities that run programs like this have some clause in there that if you don't maintain it. They're gonna pull the, the flowers out so that we don't have, um, poor looking, um, floral displays. In a pot. So there's, there's some caveats there. And then the idea is that you would adopt it for the season and then it would be available. To adopt the following season, each season, so that you're not committed long term, but you could continue to adopt it if you wanted to do it long term.
Yeah, this was, uh, this did pass recommendation on Public Works to purchase these. Uh, we did say we would. Uh, maybe some money would be given to the budget, but it did come on recommendation of Public Works to purchase these. Three of them have three hundred ninety five each. Two hundred eighty-five dollars? Uh, one thousand, two hundred fifty-three dollars. There we go.
The pots that they found, um, are currently used in Osceola and they're made of some type of. Plastic where they can be outside year round. Even in weather like we're having today. Um, so there's the potential for having some winter, um, floral stuff in there like. For the cops or something like that. Um, but also these pots are self-watering. So they do need some water, but then there's, there's a. There's a design so it can hold that water and they don't need to be watered quite as often.
Bob, was there any issues with placement of the thing? Did you go around and look to see where?
We haven't, I haven't, um, gone with anybody yet to see replacements.
Um, did you guys go around and look to see where those flow plants?
We have made a map, but we want to make sure that it works for the village.
My only question is, what if additional people or. Companies or whatever would decide they want more pots? Is that something that you guys would entertain to, to, you know, other than, I know the twelve is additional, but, or, you know, initial. But, um. If it's a great idea and it looks great, you know, maybe different developments might say, yeah, we'd like to get some out in, in our area. Is that something that you'd look at down the road?
That idea has already come up. Um, because we haven't. Even placed the order and we think that we have all twelve already, um.
Spoken.
Money geared for the, the first twelve. So. Ideas have come forth, but maybe we should buy more, but let's get this going. Let's get a season under our belt. But I think, um, there could be others, certainly the industrial part might be another place to expand, um, the adaptive pot program.
Somebody wants to make a motion? Brandon Chrome, make a motion to approve flower, flower pots for Main Street, um, that goes with the agreement. And also us purchasing three pots in the amount of thirteen hundred fifty-three dollars.
Donnie, current second.
Brandon Chrome's first, Donnie second. Any concession? All in favor?
Aye.
Both same time.
One abstention.
Caleb Epstein's. Public Safety, the interim conditional use permit for the events, ICB.
Um, I think we all went through and I'll say this, I mean, there was just a couple of small changes. So under one D. We have added the clause, at least chief sheriff and the village board president or their respective designees may stand council over if you want. In cases of inclement weather or other unforeseen circumstances. Page four. Seven C. We have added, it's supposed to be signed over the responsibility of the committee and that is interior. I'm sorry, for you, would be, we're going to add. On or near the event grounds and strike near the EMS building. So it just changes that very slightly so that they have a little more flexibility where they're holding their command post. G, we have changed a little bit of the, the format of the payment. Um, in working with the clerk, we have came up with, uh, I'm sorry, the treasure. Their kind of law enforcement and fighters shall submit an invoice to the assistant general manager within seven days of the event for immediate payment to be received. Anything submitted after the seventy period will need to be submitted to Live Nation Worldwide for payment to be received thirty days after invoice is received.
Um, one question on that. Bob, do we, do your guys incur any inspects, um, any costs? As far as this ever, for me to explicitly say. And village board staff outside of this, no. Um, public works employees. Oh, good.
If so, it does go on to say extraordinary documented administrative or other costs incurred by the village as a result will be invoiced.
Oh, perfect.
If that happens. Um, under H, we're changing the deposit from five thousand to ten thousand in two places in that paragraph. And on the, uh, the next page, page six, it's, uh, ten to fifteen thousand dollars. If that deposit didn't cover, then next year would be higher. And then just change the date and the president's name.
Do you want to make a motion? It was just approved in, uh. In public, public, uh, AP.
Yes.
It sure was.
You got any recommendation coming out of public safety?
Yes. Do you like to make a motion to approve the interim use permit? Um, with the changes provided?
Right in front, second. Chris Marino with the first, Brandon Chrome's second, discussion.
Do we happen to know, uh, any of the, uh, events that are coming down and this is gonna affect that right now, or is this just the, the initial?
No, we don't.
Approval on that?
Yeah, come on, EJ, who's gonna be here?
But it's, you know.
It's his birthday today. Oh, he's on there.
Yeah, I'm here. Happy birthday, EJ. Hey, thank you. I'm listening. Um. We have. Um, right now we've got four events that are for sure, working on a couple more.
Are them all summer events, EJ?
Yes, yep, they're all during the summer.
No, nothing during school year?
Nope, as of right now, nothing on the school year yet, Donnie.
Hey, that's all I needed to know. Thank you.
Thanks, EJ. Yep, yep, have a good one.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both same side. Finance and personnel, discussion possible approval, impact fee needs proposal. This is something that kind of caught me off guard when, um. And some of the. The, um, price tags came in. Did you want to speak to him at all or?
Um, I don't really have a whole lot to say. I think this is really more John's show. Um, I think that if you had some concerns about the cost, you know, we can probably play a few games if you could revise it in some way. I mean, it's really. His end of the shop, which, you know, I'm informed of and I know that is being discussed, but, um, you know, like I said, in specific like what pieces. One thing that can be done for another. Kind of consolidator.
And I, I did speak to Andrew today about it because I didn't. Feel like I, I knew really anything about this and why it would cost so much, but. Um, the good estimates were from seventeen thousand to thirty-seven thousand five hundred. So. Uh, she thought the only thing that we actually needed to work on was our transportation impact fee per schedule. Um, so I thought maybe we could look at it and do one this year and one in two, you know, spread it out instead of. Of forty thousand dollar junk all at once and, and out of the five with the impact, let's maybe split them up a little bit.
So one thing I can say is, uh, so our proposal was seventy-five hundred per piece. So if you wanted to do that, then certainly. Work on just the one this year and then roll out another one when you need it to be done. So I didn't talk to Andrew about the necessity of which ones need to be done, which ones.
She is on too. So if there's a specific question, she is on there.
The point of discussion for this too is I did ask Andrea, um, in, in what it cost for the last, um. Impact fee needs assessment and that was, uh, and done in two thousand and ten. And I believe, uh, if I remember correctly, it was.
Sixteen thousand?
Oh, it was less than that. It was, I think, twelve thousand. Let me just pull up and.
Andrew, wasn't it sixteen thousand in two thousand and ten?
I heard you there.
I'm, I'm here. Um, yes, it was sixteen.
Sixteen thousand, yeah.
So it's something we need to move forward with right away. So.
And the, the concern I would have is, uh, is being able to, you know, with MSIs, uh, would that timeline? Is that something that is, uh, feasible to get done in like a ninety day time, time period? Cause I, I know, I know Ellers had stated that they were able to get, get it done within. A ninety day time period. And the only reason I'm saying that is getting into the, the building season going into this year with, uh, a considerable amount of, uh. Developments going in at several different places, whether or not that's going to be a feasible timeframe.
I think I, I had suggested in, in my proposal, uh, July seventh. Um, just to allow adequate time to review and, you know, go over with you folks and finance committee. Um, certainly, you know. It certainly is possible, as provided that we get timely information, you know, a lot of the information is. You know, it's a collection of. Stuff from you folks and then for us to put it together. So ninety days is, you know, I, I put July seventh thinking that was a, a reasonable timeframe, but. If there was solid reasons to move it up a month or something like that.
Just a building, buildings, you know, building's gonna kick off April, May, you know, they're gonna start, you know, looking at, you know, that at that point in time, I think even the developments are going to be. You know, trying to get going at that point in time as well. So, you know, if you've got. At least that set in place, they can kind of set their, their budgets at that too.
Well, and I, you know, I certainly, you know, I would anticipate some will go up, some will go down, you know, when they change significantly.
But then you're getting the proper amount in for.
Yeah, I, I get it. I get it. Uh, but, you know. You know, what houses are gonna go in before July, you know, let's say certain, you know, certainly Pine Vale is further out than that. You know, they have to grade the size and everything else. So it's, it's infill essentially that would be in the interim. So. Um, I don't know if I answered your question. Ninety days doable, but again, that, that relies on kind of timely and information and responses from you folks as well.
I think we can throw it down to. Personnel finance if we just got it and we can look at it there and try to come up with a game plan.
I mean, certainly on our side, if you have more questions, just feel free to send them to me or respond to John Cannon, spoke just the other night, you know, chatting with him personally, but John Cannon is gonna be the one to do the one. He's really the.
I love franchise.
Yeah, I know. I said I was gonna try and meet up with you before the meeting.
Everybody okay with, uh, taking her over to Personnel and Finance and going to the plan?
You want a recommendation from Personnel Finance if there's, you know, like the next meeting, is that what you're trying to?
Put it on the agenda and we can. Maybe we don't do anything and don't recommend anything. Who knows?
Well, I, I know it's well overdue. So it's something that really needs to be looked at because if we fail to do anything on it, we're overlooking the true needs of the expansion of this village. And that's what needs to be addressed with that needs assessment is that we're not properly, it's, it's been, it's so old. That it's already exceeded its, you know, needs. For the current cost of, of the. The, uh, assessment that gets charged on every one of them. So this is something that, you know, we have. Buildings and, and, um, you know, infrastructure and everything else that's dealing with it. It's, it's definitely overdue and it needs to be addressed sooner rather than later.
Okay, then I'm just not understanding from what Andrea said earlier. But we can add that up.
So I don't know financially, you know, if we have that in our, uh. In our budget to cover this kind of, uh, of, you know, a cost for, you know, additional nineteen thousand at the low end and. And, you know, hopefully we could maybe like you said, Kurt, run that curve ball, shaving some of that down to a, a more feasible number, but. Still sixteen thousand on top of that was not something that we had anticipated when we were doing our budgets either. So I, I don't, Andrea, do you? Happen to know, uh, if there's. Anywhere that we might be able to look at something like that to, to get the cost of getting this needs assessment financed?
Um, well, it was mentioned at finance that. The cost could possibly be covered with impact fees. Um, that have already been collected. So. That's one option.
Can you explain like what you had, uh, told me about this earlier and that you thought? Just a change was the only one that need to be looked at and then why?
Well. Not. I believe that statement was from. A part of our conversation where we were talking about if it needed to be done. And I also mentioned that. The library and. Um, police departments, portions of those impact fees, those projects are done. So, um. If you were going to break it down, the transportation is something that should be looked at because of the way that it's calculated for commercial buildings. Excuse me, um.
You want to explain the five different impact fees?
Um, while there. We collect fees for water, transportation, police, fire and the library. So the nine, one thousand nine hundred and forty dollar impact fee is broken up between those based on. The need study that was done in two thousand and ten.
Donnie, are you good with kicking it back to finance and personnel?
Well, I, yeah, I, you know, I'm perfectly fine with kicking it back into them as long as we don't just keep kicking this can down the road because we're at a point. Right now where we, we need to really address this. It's, like you said, two of the. Impact fees have already been satisfied and, and I think we need to look at, and I, I, I get questions asked of the constituents about, you know. Are we handling the growth, additional, uh, how is that? Being dealt with and are we able to handle that? And that's what this impact fee is for. But if it's not going in the proper. If it's not been studied and going in the proper areas, then the impact fee is not addressing the growth that we're experiencing. That's what the impact fee is for. And so we've seen that and we're gonna continue to see that. And we've already approved. You know, another series to that. So addressing it. Sooner rather than later, like, you know, if we, if we kick it back to them, I'm more concerned about like you said, it'd be nice to get it rolled out this year because. You know, it's, it's, it's definitely overdue, especially with two of those, um, needs already been satisfied. So if it, if the board's okay with it, as long as, you know, I, I'm perfectly fine with kicking it back to, to finance, but we also. We also gotta get the ball rolling on it at some point in time in my opinion. So whether it's, even if it's nineteen thousand. But we also, we also got to get the ball rolling on it at some point in time in my opinion. So whether it's, even if it's nineteen thousand right now by MSA to take care of it, or if it's fifteen thousand for two of the other ones, it doesn't matter as long as the board is acceptable to move it forward with some kind of a need stir. So just like.
I guess, you know, my, I would say the opinion is you're going to look at it, look at it all. Let's get it done with, you know, there's, there's some, uh, you know, a lot of impact on it, what, you know, the impact on affordable housing, some of those things. They all have the same demographics, you know, you don't want to be changing that up every year. You know, to me, if you take a snapshot, look at them all, you know, it's probably preferable and.
How often is most of the municipalities readdressed?
It varies. It varies. I mean, you know, for, for two or what, Josh, probably five years would be great, but probably more like ten or longer.
Five years is pretty frequent in my view. I mean, it's not the kind of thing, obviously it costs money to do it, it costs time to do it, you know, builders probably like the kind of predictability, um, you know, not since twenty ten. That's, that's a fair bid, you know, um. I don't know if there's like a industry standard about how frequently this gets done, but, you know, somewhere between the five and ten year range seems to be appropriate. Um, but, you know, I, I would certainly lean on staff if Andrew believes that, you know, we've already done, I mean, the library is already built, right? So that's not really going to be a main need moving forward. Um.
Andrew, just want to put it to personnel finance and we'll get it going later, Donnie.
What is to, uh, Chuck, would, uh, May one? I know, well, now we're pushing it back out. So June first, would that be unacceptable? Cause we're pushing it back a month on that ninety days already.
I'm going to need my Saturdays off anyway, so.
Discussion possible approval of state trust fund loan?
I have a revised presentation from the other day.
I know what you guys have a new one too.
Hello, good evening. Uh, Josh Lowe from Ellers. Uh, so we heard it from a couple of our colleagues recently during their last week. Uh, speaking to the committee, uh, on this issue, you've also spoken to our colleague, John Cameron, who works out of our Milwaukee area office. For many years. Uh, so for tonight, I just wanted to go over with you, your options for extending the twenty twenty taxable general obligation promissory thing, which was used to, um, property acquisition for tax in the district level five. Uh, so some, just quick background here, we took this out in two thousand and five, um, for about one point one or so, one point zero one million dollars, uh, to acquire a property for that district. All right. The way this was set up at the time was to go interest only through twenty twenty three and fully mature that in twenty twenty four. So that's coming up on us on March first. The reason that we had that kind of structure is to build in more time for that tax in the district to get going and get more development opportunities so that we can pay it off rather than having five years of level payments where you have to pay the principal. And then we wind up having to advance more funds from the general fund or other sources to be able to pay for it. So, um, we're at the point now where we have to figure out what to do with that now that it's coming to be in just a few weeks. So our proposal to extend this is to exercise a state trust fund loan from the Board of Commissioners of Public Land in Wisconsin. Okay. Um, this is a really good opportunity for that because since the original note had to be done on a taxable basis, which is the way you have to do it when you finance, uh, a private property acquisition. This is not seen as like a normal governmental purpose where you could go for tax exempt borrowing, uh, using your geo obligation, your general obligation borrowing capacity. This has to be done on the taxable basis. So, uh, the interest rates were higher at the time and they will be now moving forward. So, uh, the state trust fund loan is, is considered taxable. So you can do it that way. Right? So the reason that the state trust fund loan would be a good, uh, alternative for this compared to bank financing or a company. Uh, one, since it's going to be done on a taxable basis, you're not going to get the lower, the lowest tax exempt rates. So bank tax exempt financing will be very comparable to what you're going to get with the state trust fund loan, which is that with six percent. Okay. Uh, you can also go for twenty years with state trust fund loan, whereas you'd probably go for about ten or less with bank financing. The reason you want twenty years is because that helps you match up the entire use of the tax of the district, right? Since that district was open in twenty twenty, you have until twenty twenty one to incur any additional expenses and pay those off. Uh, it's very flexible. It's prepayable any year, um, starting between January first and I think it's Au- August thirty first. As long as you give them ninety days, or excuse me, thirty days notice, you can prepay it in time. You can refinance it through other debt. If you do another bond issuance or something else like that in the future, we can just package that all and take that up for them. Uh, and it's also easy to administer. Basically to apply for this, you send it a one page sheet. Uh, we're actually in the process of getting the full application back from tonight, which has the resolution that you can look at tonight and approve. Um, tomorrow we'll circulate that back around for signatures. If you approve it, then we just go back to the state. So we don't have to do that complicated RFT process, send that out to multiple institutions, get turn chiefs back and do all that kind of stuff. It certainly allows us to cover some than the competitive securities bond that we did for you guys, um, in the last summer. So there are lots of nice advantages, I think, to the state trust fund loans, why we're recommending it to you tonight for this extension. Uh, the next page shows the estimated currently debt service schedule. Uh, so this is generated by our software to really reproduce this. It's generally very accurate. So, um, this is the way that it's likely going to be structured with, um, the remaining twenty years of level payments. Uh, eagle eyed observers can probably tell that that's not twenty years right now. Uh, but that's because we had to go back to retroactive to the twenty years of the original issuance. So Wisconsin statute only gives you that time period. So if you refund it, you're only able to get the difference between where it was and the final. Uh, but the most important thing there is approximately under two thousand annual, uh, debt of his payments that can be charged to the district. So another important thing to keep in mind, whatever you're doing, uh, any kind of debt issuance is how much capacity is, uh, allowed under state law? After you do this, um, so the total amount of geo borrowing capacity that you have is equal to five percent of the village's total equalized value. Um, and certainly for Somerset and most of Wisconsin, but especially Somerset, that has gone up a lot over the last couple of years because the growth has been so explosive and the economic value of that growth has really jumped up a lot as inflation and property values have, have gone. So, um, that gives you plenty of geo borrowing capacity, not just for this issue, but any others moving forward. And certainly for this one, uh, really we're just taking one note and flipping it to another. So it really doesn't have any impact on the capacity at all. Any other questions so far? Um, so that's kind of like the high level on the state trust fund loan, what would do to your overall finances and that picture there. But I just want to take a moment to just pause briefly. Questions? Um, that word that's up on the screen, I think is the one that we shared last week. So it's only happened, most of today one. The first, do we need to zoom in or do we have?
Okay, so one's for Chuck, twenty three thousand on that, yeah?
I can, I can just report on this one if that's what everyone's thinking about. Not an issue. Um. So working from left to right, the way that our cash flows are really structured is we start at the left and project revenues out to that. And then we'll move into the next section on the right, and then we can describe all of the expenses that are currently charged. And then we'll get into the actual balances that are remaining, which is really the, the key thing that we kind of want to measure against. Alright, so that's a great spot to start right there. Okay, so, uh, I'll just talk about the revenue side for just a minute. Um, the first thing that you see over there on the left is growing wings. Alright, so that was the development that was agreed to last year and should be starting construction this year. The way property taxes are collected and then distributed into revenue in Wisconsin and probably most other places is that the first year constructs in twenty twenty four, then we'll have that be valued in twenty twenty five and then start to project revenue in twenty twenty six, right? So that development we already know is pretty much bait. Um, and that's in the developer's agreement. About one point seven million minimum assessed value. Okay, so that will start generating revenue against the tax rate and you'll start receiving that in twenty twenty six. As you can see, the, the tax rate has actually gone down between twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four. The reason for that is because your levy, that allows everyone else in the county and the area, it stayed pretty much the same because of levy limits. The difference there is because equalized value has gone up so high, that same levy amount is now spread for a much larger value. So the great part is, uh, most people's tax rate goes down. That's usually a great one for a lot of people to hear. The downside is it makes our job as managing these tax increment districts a little bit trickier because we're projecting less revenue. Okay. Uh, but for this district, there hasn't been any revenue yet because it's a new district and we haven't had any growth. So the first thing we have there is growing wings. And that's the first thing. The next column that you'll see over there for that additional development is the first year's worth of estimates for the development was expected to occur that we put in the original project plan back in twenty twenty.
That's a two point three million?
That's right. So we anticipated four million to come from a variety of residential and commercial opportunities. And that's how those numbers there get populated, that two point three, three, nine, one, three and two. Those were the synthesis of those different categories from that original project plan. The reason those are there is because that's what we need to happen over time for the current expenditures that we will see on the right hand side. I'll get to those in a minute, to make sure that the entire, uh, tax increment district cash flows by the time you get to the year twenty forty one. So we picked those years, those amounts of development.
Basically twelve million.
Right? It's not thirteen, but you got it. Plus the one point seven for really ways.
Yeah, but yeah, twelve million minus, or with the one point seven?
Uh, it's thirteen million total.
Okay, so, alright.
So that's what's there. That's what we need to make sure we get to a positive cash flow by the end of the year for the district. That's usually what we'd see as described as a success, successful tax increment district, one that can pay all of its own costs. But I'm sorry, it's just my glasses. Okay. Alright, so if we scroll over to the right, I can describe the actual expenses that we have, uh, charging to the TID so far. Alright, so that taxable note, that twenty twenty two, that's a typo there. It should say the twenty twenty. That's the one that we're talking about extending tonight. Alright. Um, just for the record, I did make my projection for the one that's in the packet, but I'll just feed to the slide. Um, that about twelve five, uh, that you see there for, that was all of the interest that we've been paying, right? So I talked about that at the front. Uh, we've been paying interest on that. And what we're doing is extending the final payment, not shown there. Uh, and we're extending that, what was going to be about the one million dollar balloon payment into that state trust bond projected over there on to the right. So that is the debt service schedule that we pulled from the slide, a couple of slides ago, right? Okay, so that's what that means, right? So between those, those two, the twenty twenty two taxable note and the twenty twenty four state trust fund loan, that represents the permanent financing for the property acquisition. Right? The next slide over, uh, not, not next slide, so the next column over, that twenty twenty three general obligation bonds, that was a TID five share of utilities for growing wings. That was part of that bond that we did just last year. So that's why that goes all the way through. Next column to the right are the development incentives that were for growing wings for their contribution, going back to them for, uh, to re, I'm not sure if it was a reimbursement. For paying out for their, um, development into this district. Okay. To the right of that is just some admin expenses. Every year you can charge some expenses for the TID back to the TID. Um, you know, like your audit fees, DOR filing, that kind of stuff. So it's pretty normal. Right? Okay. So next column over, that sums up all of the expenses. The next two columns are the most important, right? Uh, the first one there is your annual balance is how much is, are you in the positive or negative at any specific year? So you can see that first year, uh, that shows the negative fourteen nine oh, oh nine eight. That is the year twenty twenty three, we just wrapped up, um, and that's attributed to the payments for the twenty twenty note and then the admin expenses. Um, twenty twenty four, it's going to be minus twenty three, two sixty four, with the interest this year and then the first year of the bonds. Alright, everyone tracking with me so far? Right?
So the twenty three thousand, two sixty four is due at the end of this year because that, that's due to be paid, right?
Well, we twenty twenty.
The twenty three thousand, two sixty four annual balance, that's due at the end of this year, right?
No, it's just a summation of all of them. It could be due at, any of those could be due at any specific time. I think that the, uh, the interest on the twenty two note, that's due in March. Right? Uh, so we have that payment and then the.
Basically it's due this year.
Yeah, it's all, it's just all in twenty.
Well, fourteen thousand was paid last year, twenty three thousand is due this year.
Exactly.
So, and then we talked about that in finance.
Yep.
Is where we're going to get that money from because, uh, the one to the right of that, I might be getting ahead of you a little bit. The two eighty one, zero sixty nine, we've been borrowing from other funds of the village to pay, to pay the, that amount so far, right?
Exactly.
And we, we said we have the availability of, uh, the TID for closure of forty five thousand that's coming up. And we were contemplating borrowing it from there so that we wouldn't be taken from the tax base to, to pay for that.
Okay, hundred percent. So the two sixty six, it's the top of the column and you can go to balance. I think right. So these are funds that have been borrowed from the general fund to date. So that might've been interest payments for the last couple of years on the note. It's an infrastructure here and there. So that's what is pulled directly from the audit. So that's what your honor said has already been paid for that. Um, this is totally normal, right? So when most communities do a tax and we're financing district, there are no revenues at the beginning. So frequently there are costs that are fronted from other sources of the village. What we really view as the most important thing is the number at the bottom right that shows that one seventy eight, one thirty. And so again, this is, we got to that number there because I added that twelve million approximately of development from the project plan to get to that number, right? If you took any of those numbers out, then you would see that being a negative. If we add more development, that would show it even greater positive. So the most important things to take away is that I welcome that R two, R two, right? One, monitoring that annual balance and understanding, how are we going to pay for that? You can't just run a negative. It has to, to pay your bills. It has to become from some other source of the village. And this would be a good time to shoot to the last slide, actually.
Guys, can I stop you for just one second before you get off it, Eric? Cause I wanted to, I wanted to ask one question and just come to my, um. Just to get some back there. Thank you. Okay, so where it says twenty three thousand, right? And if you go over to the next column, uh, and it says three oh four.
Yep.
Right? Okay, so we borrowed three hundred and four thousand from some place, right? It is some other fund of the, the villages, whether it be in general fund or whatever, right? So as we get down five more years, are we borrowing five hundred and seventy four thousand dollars from other funds? You know, I mean, because we're adding to that two eighty one, right?
Right.
To the tune of another three hundred thousand from other tax funds? Is that what we're saying there?
So you only add, um, so the cumulative balance each year takes what was in the previous year and then plus or minus whatever's in the annual balance the next year. So.
The hundred nineteen, yeah, the twenty three goes to three oh four, then the hundred nineteen goes to four twenty three, right?
Yep.
So that's what I'm saying is that basically over the next five years, we're putting another three hundred thousand that we got to borrow from another fund?
That's right. Yeah, cause something ultimately has to pay those bills when they come in. But you do have other sources of funds to do that. One. Uh, so that's the next page. Actually, you know what? Let's, let's stay here first. I need to make sure that, um, a little out of order. Okay, so two main takeaways. You do need additional development to come through, right? That's that second column ingredient there. So we already know at least some development is needed to pay just your current expenses. You'll probably want a little bit more than that to be able to pay you back for all the other funds that you've advanced, like that, you know, five seventy four that you mentioned a minute ago. If we get another million or two of development approximately, you'll be able to pay yourself back with interest, right? Other important takeaways here are, we've got on the screen now about thirteen million in development. The project plan in TID five was estimated at the time to get twenty five, right? So we already know that other things are happening in the district. Um, it's still very early on. As I mentioned, it's pretty typical to go into deficits in the short term at the early life of a district. Okay? Um, so I don't view this as, you know, you're in the danger zone, bad decisions have been made, you know, we really need to get our hands back on the wheel. I would not frame it like that at all. We just need this to play out, uh, cause right now, in my view, we've only reached about not even half of our capacity yet. But just, with just what we have there on the screen. So I would say let trends, let present trends continue. Continue to work on other development. There's lots of opportunity there. Um, I think in the long view of this district, it'll be just fine. Right? But we do have problems to tackle in the immediate term, which is how you solve your problems with the annual balance each year. But, we do have problems to tackle in the immediate term, which is how you solve your problems with the annual balance each year. And now I think it's time to go to the last one. Alright, so where are you gonna get those other funds from? Where else can you borrow to make sure you can meet your annual ends, right? Um, these are just some potential sources that you could borrow from and then pay back over time. One is the village's unassigned fund balance, that's basically your savings account, um, for use in emergencies. I would not portray this as an emergency, but you know, it's another source of funds that you can use.
If we pull from the unassigned fund balance, would that affect our, our bond rating?
Um, sometimes they do surveillance on that, but usually we get a new bond rating once you do a new issue, which you're not gonna be doing anytime soon.
Well, that's what I'm saying, three or four years down the road, you'll be looking at, which is when we'd be borrowing that money. So if we were to take, you know, another three hundred thousand from that amount, is that gonna affect our bond rating?
I think you've got enough cushion there, so it's not gonna be a major issue. But, you know, we also wanna monitor how much you take out, how much you push back, and also kind of diversify some of those funds. So you're not just to pay only your unassigned fund balance. I think a lot of the rating agencies are now not looking just at your unassigned fund balance of all the sources of funds you can bring. Um, but certainly like that is the biggest flag that they look at. Like that's, that's the main measurement that you see. Uh, so we've got the bridge fund, um, you know, Donnie mentioned the estimated TID foreclosure balance. So when we closed it for whatever's in the bottom right, you know, that cumulative balance column gets split amongst the other taxing jurisdictions. So the village gets about, you know, a third to forty percent usually of, of what that remains, that's estimated to be forty-five thousand. So, Finance Committee voted just the other day to use a portion of that to meet this year's obligations. So you're not going to the negative for this year. So you still.
We recommended, you know, pulling that money from the twenty-three thousand from the forty-five thousand dollar. So, that, that'll come off for the, the board's discretion.
And then the last option on there is, you know, one to have, and I certainly wanna be able to speak to it, but levy for the debt service, um, you know, just like you are for a lot of other, um, you know, village general obligation debt. Put it on the levy, you know, we can help you out, fill your levy limit worksheet, which is usually not something that we want to use tax increment, uh, projects for. But this is not a purpose, right? Um, it's not have been the first time, and I think we, I'm pretty sure I made this comment when we talked about it, even for the TID for the month, but this one. If you believe in the projects, letting for it is, is acceptable, right? This is not like a bridge to nowhere that was ever taken out for this district, anything like that. So, you know, if you believe that it's a worthy municipal project, then that is something that can be taken into account if you have to want to levy for it. I don't think you have to, but I wanna make sure you have full awareness of all of your options. Okay, uh, and the last point that I mentioned is that any funds that you advance, we would seek to repay with TID dollars over time at interest, right? So those are all policy decisions. You know, if you want it to be a permanent loan to the TID, you could certainly do that. We would generally recommend that, but that's a policy choice that the village can do, and we also set the interest rate at whatever you want. So that's really a whole picture of the entire finance plan, um. Start to finish, are there any questions about the state trust fund itself? TID five impacts? What it, that is, don't forget after any questions.
The dollars recommended is that we use this big trust fund loan.
Yep. You know, it's also recommended by finance. Is that most of them?
You know, guy, I'm making motion to, uh, go forward with the finance committee's recommendation utilizing the state trust fund loan. Reference to TID five, right?
Right. Brandon Crone, second.
Deal with the first, Brandon with the second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, same side?
And Donnie Curran makes a motion. Donnie Curran make a motion to, uh, utilize the TID for the closure balance to offset, uh, twenty twenty-four debt that serves right, is that off, you want to offset? Of TID four.
I think you're talking about financing to that here, that's part of this.
Right.
Any rest of that, Donnie?
The motion was to utilize the TID foreclosure balance to offset the twenty twenty-four, um, deficit for the TID.
Pardon?
For the TID payment? Yeah, for the TID, the TID offset.
First, anybody in the second? Brandon Crone, second. Brandon Crone with the second. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Both same time. Discussion possible approval established.
Thanks, appreciate it.
Yeah.
Thanks, Josh. Established Village of Somerset, uh, Saint Cray Valley Foundation Fund. Do you wanna speak to this real quick? Thank you, Josh.
Hi, I'm Kim Dunleavy. I'm here, uh, representing the Somerset Community Foundation. There was a request for the Village of Somerset to establish a, um, non-endowed agency fund with the Saint Cray Valley Foundation. Um, the Somerset Community Foundation is one of ten affiliates that lives underneath the Saint Cray Valley Foundation. And the primary reason for establishing this fund is so that, um, grants can be donated to an official five oh one C three organization, which the Saint Cray Valley Foundation is. Uh, the, this came to be with a project that's currently in process here in the village, but it's not tied to that project. Um, the, the primary purpose of, for establishing this fund is to be able to do just what I said is to, um, apply for grants or donation from organizations that have in their charter that they'll only make donations to a, an official, uh, five oh one C three nonprofit organization. Um, but the background to how this came to be is that there, and many of you are, have heard about this, um, that there are some electronic signs. There's a group of people and service organizations that have been working on this to bring some electronic signs to the Village of Somerset at entrance points coming into the village and, um, there is some financial institutions in the area that may want to donate and applicants have been made. And they were, um, denied because the applicants were not a five oh one C three organization and uh, applying again with that, with an organization with that designation could benefit a significant donation for those signs and push it over the top, allowing those to, um, come to fruition. Those projects are, that project is still in flux and there are things that need to, um, be finalized. And should a donor come along and build the fund that they're needing, then, um, making an application using this fund would not be necessary. It wouldn't, but having the fund then allows for future projects, um, where do, applications could be made for a grant or a donation. So, the, the request was to establish the fund. The way to do that is to sign the fund agreements, and I think you probably have a copy of that. At the Finance Personnel Committee meeting, um, there was a draft of that fund agreement and it was recommended that the name of the fund be changed. The person at the Saint Cray, Heather Logelin, actually, the president of the Saint Cray Valley Foundation, put together the draft and she put it together based on understanding the electronic sign project that's in place. And so she had signage in the name of the fund. And, um, the committee members recommended that it be more broadly based, so it didn't tie it to sign it. So she went ahead and made that change on the draft agreement, but then also noted that you might wanna change the purpose because the purpose refers to signage as well. So that might be an edit that you want to recommend for the fund agreement.
Where would that be at?
Um.
On the, on the, this, on the, uh, fund agreement?
It is in section one, the last sentence. The purpose of this fund is support projects that improve signage throughout the Village of Somerset. And I, uh, there was a suggestion.
So we say projects?
Support projects throughout the Village of Somerset, but straight.
Straight signage and foot projects and it's like.
Actually, projects is right there. So if we just strike that.
Support projects. Some projects that, that improve the Village of Somerset then?
Right, so it's straight those three words, that improved signage. So would that sentence make sense for you, the purpose?
The purpose of this fund is to support projects that improve the Village of Somerset, all that.
That's fine too.
They remove signage throughout the, the, right?
We just need to send the exact edits, uh, that you want to see back so that a final fund agreement can be drafted. So the, the steps here are that the fund agreement gets signed. The fund will get established once monetary dollar amount is presented.
I believe that's a minimum of five thousand, right?
A minimum of five thousand dollars, yes.
Do we have that, uh, available to make it into that through one of the current, uh, because I thought there was like a threshold already established for the signage? Would they be making that into the, the fund or?
No, I don't know that, but, um, the fund doesn't have to get established until, you know, a donation is received in that amount. So the fund agreement can sit there and just wait until.
Until you get a.
Until that money comes in, yep.
I didn't know if the, the current funds that were already raised would be moved to the, move to the, uh, the foundation.
You know, I think that's a possibility, but I wanted to point out that no fees start until that fund is established. So I guess there's not really a reason to move money in there until you make an application or a grant, you receive the grant and it has to go to the Saint Cray Valley Foundation. That would establish the fund and that's when the fees start. So while there's fees, um, associated withholding this fund and it's to offset the administrative costs at the Saint Cray Valley Foundation, these funds also get invested and they, as long as the stock market is doing well, um, they, there will be some earnings and those earnings can offset those fees. So, there is one fee that would continue even after those funds move back out into the community and that is a hundred dollar annual fee. So even if there's, once the fund is established, even if there's no money sitting in there, it would be a hundred dollar annual fee to maintain the fund. Any questions?
Right, I've had a chance to review, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. Well, I've had a chance to redo the bylaws on, um, on the, the foundation. There was just one question on that. Is, uh, would we then become the affiliated community foundation under article thirteen? Where it says, uh, they'll authorize establishment of affiliated community foundations as operating divisions. Would that be the, the, the village board then would be the?
No, no, the Somerset Community Foundation is the affiliate. So those are the bylaws for.
So the Somerset Community Foundation would be affiliated to the Saint Cray Valley Foundation?
Yes, it is an affiliate.
Oh, it is already?
It is.
I see, because they've already been established there. So this, this is just a, okay.
So this is just, yeah, and this is just establishing a fund. You're not establishing another affiliate.
Okay, that, that's what I wanted to.
But this is a good point, Donnie. Um, at the Finance Personnel Committee meeting, um, you noted a clause in the fund agreement and it's under section eight. And, uh, you had a concern about that clause. And so we posed that to Heather Logelin and asked her to speak to it. What does this clause mean? And, um, asked her to give an example of how it would be used. And then you also wanted to see a copy of the bylaws because the bylaws are referenced in that section. So Heather's response um, for a way that the, the Saint Cray Valley Foundation might step in and make a change as to how the money gets distributed, she gave an example where a fund might have been established to purchase educational VHS tapes thirty years ago. And today, that's really not viable. People don't have VHS players or, um, use VHS tapes. So then they might make a change to the fund. The Saint Cray Valley Foundation might step in and make a change and say, you can distribute fund, money out of this fund to support educational materials. There's something a little bit more broad so that the money can actually come out. Because otherwise, it can only be used to purchase VHS tapes. So that's.
For the endowment, the endowment donation, right?
So, um, just to be clear, this is a non-endowed fund.
That's why, but the, the example that was brought forth in an email was on an endowment, it was an endowment mention. And that's where the variance would be made, that they couldn't, they couldn't make that so that they, they could vary from something that is obsolete and, and allow them to purchase materials like CDs or DVDs or something.
Right.
That is of the time.
Right.
Under an endowment, but this is not doubt, so that wouldn't actually apply in it, right? The donation money's going in.
And, and it's more, it's, um, as she states, it's a specific short-term project.
Right, right.
So, the, the whole purpose of it is for money to come in and as soon as it's needed, go right back out into the.
The bylaws there, they spelled that out too.
Yeah, you also asked for, um, the specific, um, mechanism for issuing that disbursement and then she addressed that.
So I, I could, like I said, I've reviewed everything. That was, that you spilled out.
You ready to make a motion on, Donnie?
I am.
So we get this moving?
I'd like to make a motion that we.
Thank you, Jim.
Um, yeah, appreciate the spearheading on that too. Um, I think I made a motion to, um, approve the, the fund agreement for agency non-endowed with the, uh, amend, uh, amendment under number one, to re- strike the wordage, signage throughout the from that last sentence.
Brandon Crone, second. The first and the second, further discussion?
Uh, does legal have any concerns about this, Australian or?
Well, it's first I've seen it, but it's a tool. I think that's what you're gonna use it for, the tool to allow people to donate. Um, and other municipalities have similar things, you know, have friends in the parks, they'll have, you know, this is just sort of, I think, a one-stop shop where you can put all those.
A number of the other, um, of the ten affiliates have these in place with their municipality.
Yeah.
All in favor? Aye, both same side. Thank you, Kim. Fire rescue, the December report. Thirty-six calls for service, seventeen in the village, thirteen medicals, four fire rescue calls, twelve in a township consisting of eight medicals and four fire rescues, and seven auto aid calls, eight in St. Joe and one in Star Prairie. Brings us to a total of four hundred and forty-four runs for the year compared to four hundred and sixty for the same time in two thousand twenty-two. Discussion possible approval ordinance fifteen dash one dash nineteen, the building code schedule of fees.
I think, uh, it's important you might wanna know here, Mr. Curran, uh, under Somerset Fire Rescue, it says they have low staffing also. Uh, and they'd like to, they do not have any current applications on file. I think they're looking for, uh, additional because they're understaffed. So, uh, might not hurt really just mention that, you know, if anybody's interested in sitting and being on the volunteer fire department to feel free to reach out to them and possibly put an application in.
Perfect. Well said. Do that and then maybe we can put something on our village web, website and Facebook page. Ordinance fifteen dash one nineteen, building code, schedule fees. I, myself, I know when we, when it came to personnel and finance, I was the first one seen of it.
I'd love to bring forward on this, this month, right, to, to bring this change forward on the ordinances this month on the scheduled fees, right?
It was on December's agenda, but not listed as an ordinance change, so we had.
It was on December's agenda, but not listed as an ordinance change, so we had to put it on.
Right.
This month as an ordinance change.
And the proposed ordinance is in here under ordinance A dash five four eight. I'm just using that as a point of reference, right? That's the proposed changes?
Yes.
And, and that's. Based on last month's discussions on it, right? You know, as far as your, your changes in fees.
There wasn't any discussion last month.
It well was table to this one, basically. And so my question is with this proposed language. Um, could you share with the board? Um, what the cost would be? For example, I'm just saying of a thirty by fifty shed, what the difference in cost would be, um. Under current ordinance and what the proposed. Cost would be to the, the individual for obtaining a, a building permit. Cause I, I ran some numbers based on your, but I wanna make sure that I'm. I'm on the same page with you as far as a thirty by fifty, uh, shed, right?
Does it have electricity and heating?
Let's just, for the purposes of that, say no. It's just a, it's just a shed.
I don't know if you're gonna get a thirty by fifty in the village.
Pardon?
I don't know if you'd get a thirty by fifty in the village due to sound acts.
You can make it a twenty by thirty. I don't care. You know, I mean, uh, I'm just, uh, looking at for purposes of, uh, discussion here. Uh, what a current cost is and what your proposed cost would be for an increase.
Sorry, I gotta do math here then.
No, that's fine. Put you on a, on the spot here.
It is listed there too. The current is fifteen and the proposed is thirty. So it's double.
That's. Yeah, that's. That's the valuation.
Yeah.
And so then there's also the permit fee and.
Infuse it where it's determined by the split footage. With the following rate. Or the contractor's estimate, whichever is greater.
It'd be three hundred and twenty-two, Don, currently.
Currently.
Okay. And proposed? Cause I, I'm showing that that would be the proposed and the current is one eighty-two. Like today, if I was gonna make, uh, uh, a request for a building permit for that size. I'd, I'd only, it only cost me a hundred and eighty-two dollars. And if we agree to this, it would be three twenty-two if I'm. Right on that.
It would be a difference of a hundred and thirty-eight. Be one eighty-four on the current.
Okay, I apologize. So one eighty-four is what current price would be, three twenty-two would be, um. The change, the addition, that, that would be an additional increase. That's just on a, no. Uh, uh. I guess what I'm looking at here, I'm not necessarily unopposed to one or the other. But it looks like you're raising the evaluation and you're raising the cost for an application.
Yes.
Now, the evaluation language that you put forth in here also says whichever is greater. So by raising the evaluation. If you put the language whichever is greater in here, if a contractor says it's gonna be sixty dollars a square foot for. An unfinished ba- basement, you're gonna go by the sixty dollar square foot, not the twenty-five dollar valuation, correct?
Correct.
So why would you need that, the, the language of changing the dollar amounts in here that?
The reason is, it's because, so we were at, currently we're at sixty dollars a square foot for the house. I raised one, I raised them up ninety dollars a square foot. And everybody knows that you can't build a new house right now for ninety dollars a square foot.
Where are you at on the, on the ordinance part?
I'm on one.
Ninety dollars? I don't even see that on.
No, it's not. That's how we did our, that's how I did my calculations.
For, uh, first floor dwelling? Is that what you're looking at?
Well, this is the whole house.
Okay.
So what happens is the homeowner comes in and says they can finish their basement off for a thousand dollars. And we see that all the time, Don.
Mm-hmm.
So we wanna make it. Reasonable and fair. So that's why we went to twenty-five dollars a square foot.
But, uh, the valuation, uh, if it, if he's a small, if it's a small house. And you go to twenty-five dollars a square foot, if, if, uh, you're basically raising that threshold by. Almost fifty percent, about forty percent from fifteen to twenty. So a guy says, oh, it's gonna be a thousand bucks and you say, no, no, it's gonna be. Now we're raising that, that valuation for that individual. But then there's also. Right, and then, so then, then the, the four dollars. You, you take it, uh, out the language, additions or altercations valued at. Five thousand and over. Why did you take that out? I mean, if he's, if, if they got a small, uh, addition and it's under. Uh, under five thousand dollars, then it would be four hundred bucks flat, right?
Nope. So now if you go down to three, it's gonna be two fifty. Any addition or alteration is two fifty. So before it was anything over five thousand and over, it was four hundred. So I'm actually saving a hundred and fifty dollars there.
But on a deck. That, th- this is just on, on, on the house. On, this is on, on, uh, residential, uh, you know, so, so building of a deck is covered in the back here. Right, where you, you raise the evaluation and increase the minimum fee.
Well, and decks are pretty much. If it's a, just a deck permit, we don't go off the valuation. We just go off the deck permit.
So then the valuation would be?
That's just on new construction. One is all new construction.
So we wouldn't need A in there?
Well, to, to do a new house calculation.
No, I'm, I'm under nine. Under decks, under nine, you said you don't do work off of valuation, but you propose to increase the valuation from thirty to forty dollars. On decks under nine A, but you're not, you don't go off the valuation.
Not on a new, on a new home we do.
On a deck.
On a deck, we just go off a deck permit, so to be the two hundred.
So, so you wouldn't need the language in there of A at all.
Nine A.
Nine A, because you don't, you don't even go off that. You just go off a deck permit. So you're basically, if it's a six by six or, uh, eighteen by twenty, it's a hundred and eighty dollars of the month.
So what you read is it's covered attached or.
Yeah.
Sure.
Yeah, so it could be a three-season porch.
Yep.
Yeah.
It, it's, it's gonna be a hundred, a hundred and fifty dollars now, propose to go to a hundred and eighty.
Correct.
So you would not need the language under A. Because you do not go with the valuation.
On, on a covered porch, we do, yes. Because. People are building four-season porches, three-season porches, so basically they're inspected like. You, you gotta meet all the codes.
Hmm.
Electrical. Heating, all that stuff. Insulation.
So on a regular deck, your proposal is to increase it by sixty dollars, but on a, uh. On a covered and attached one, it's thirty dollars plus the valuation.
Correct. So on decks, on normal decks, we have three to five inspections.
On a normal deck?
It was, I would say. We usually have more than three.
Uh, I guess, you know, I, I looked around at a couple of the other, um. The other, uh, municipalities. And, you know, some of, you brought some, some forth, uh, and they were similar to what the current language is. Like Village of Hammond was, uh, current language and are you, was that one that you guys are proposing?
No, the, the village of North Hudson, which they just approved, uh, last.
That was, that was the changes? Would, would they approve the changes?
Yes.
In North Hudson. I also looked, there's, uh, you know, Al, Alkroyd is one of them that, uh, I, I checked up. And did a comparison on a couple of them and there's substantially. Yeah, I know there's a, there's a, you know, we, we looked at Alkroyd in the past, but, uh, they have, uh. Um, their, their rates are for new home, uh, inspections are. Not as high. They are, they are, I know with two, two. Your benefit, you are lower on certain items and they're, they're lower on certain items. So there's really a. A wash there. I guess what I'm saying is there's a lot to, to look into with this thing and rather than just, you know, increasing. The rates on, on this one. I mean, if you're looking at a sixty dollar increase on, on just a deck. That's anybody out here wants to put a deck on. Is, is gonna go from a hundred and forty to two hundred bucks. To put a deck on.
Well, and that's where we see a lot of code violations. I had a gentleman that just. In the village here. Gave a contractor twenty-five thousand dollars to build them a deck and it's gotta all come down. Cause they had twelve violations on it.
And that was an uncovered deck?
Correct. So now that.
What about the guy that, that knows how to build decks, right? And wants to put one on, it's small and. He's gotta, you know, pay that extra sixty dollars.
Well, and a lot of people are doing right now is, so we do a footing inspection. Then we'll go back and do a framing inspection before they get any decking down. And then they'll call us back if there's any code violation. And then we go back out there for a final. And usually there's still.
But would you have additional inspections put on something like that?
And that's one thing we don't do, Donnie. Like our, our. Our rates, what they pay for a building permit is what they pay. We don't charge any extra. I don't believe in that.
With the exception of electrical work. Which is in here under seventy-five dollars for each additional inspection.
Again, we.
Under the.
Been here almost five years and we've never charged anybody extra. I don't believe in it. I feel that that's our job. To show up to make sure it's the code. That's what the building permit is for. That's why I don't think we should. Charge extra to come back and inspect something that didn't need code. That's our job.
Is it fair to say that, you know, some of these are, uh, you know, I can understand. Given, you know, something with regards to your, your, uh, you know. The evaluation aspect of it, but if you're gonna ask for whichever is greater on this, I mean, current code, current language. Doesn't give that, that option. The current language just says it's going to be at the following rates.
Yeah, so the one prior to this one had that on there. It was just missed. And we talked to the old village president and he said, just keep it the same.
Tony, what was the last time rates were?
I believe it was two thousand eighteen, about the nineteen.
So. I looked at a few other municipalities as well. This seemed to be rather in line with my funding needs.
Which was you again?
Uh, Stillwater. Um. Uh. North of Oaxaca.
Presser, take great phones.
That one. So, in my opinion, he's keeping up with the times on his rates and.
Brandon, make a motion to approve ordinance fifteen dash one dash nineteen building code fee schedule.
Josh, I have seconds.
The first and second, any further discussion?
No, I'm just, I, what I understood, I'm looking right at Village of Hammond that was sent out to the full board. That doesn't have, uh, any of this, uh, additional cost on this one. So the Village of Hammond, uh, and the town of El Paso is also at twenty dollars a square foot for unfinished bas- basement. So I, I don't think I can be in favor of agreeing to both this one and another when I have two of them that were sent to the full board. That, um, are substantially, uh, less than that. I can't, I can't be in, I can't be in favor of that, uh, motion.
Is it the same company or a different company?
No. So it's the same company. I just have not. I can only do so many board meetings a month.
Yes.
To make sure I can get to them. They are all gonna change to this. I just haven't, like the one you see in front, North Hudson. I just not with them, they approved it. And I'm doing Somerset, I'm doing Town of Hudson, I'm doing Town of Troy, Village of Hammond.
The one in North Hudson doesn't have anything about meeting, uh, attendance of a hundred and fifty dollars and two hundred and fifty.
Well, because they're, they're not requiring me to be there.
I, I, on your discussion, I, I feel like I just don't have enough information and, and, um, I had asked for a couple other. Towns to compare to and I didn't get anything to, to compare it to. And I had asked to put it on the personnel and finance and, and have you there so we could actually. Kind of compare apples to apples and, and that never happens. So I'm not ready to. I'd rather table this and, uh, I have some more information myself.
I'm just, my point on, on it was that it's not in line with, with some of the other ones and that's why. I, I can't be in favor of that with, especially with the additional meeting attendance, it's, you know.
Again, if you guys want me. Um, a phone call away or text message, I could jump on Zoom. But I feel I should get paid something if you guys want to have these meetings on.
Just for comparison, Paul gets paid for, for the last meeting, got paid four hundred and sixty-two dollars.
Well, big difference between Paul and a billing inspector.
Okay, roll call vote, Donnie?
No.
Caleb?
Hi.
Chris?
Nate.
Hi.
Yourself, Nate?
Hi.
Hi. This is. Discussion possible approval seeking new legal counsel. This is for the. Prosecuting attorney, uh, the village attorney. Record system and. Would you send that out? So. You know?
I did not. I was not under the impression that that's what this one was. So I did not find it out.
The, uh. The current prosecuting attorney, um. Raised the rates by a hundred dollars, just kind of overnighted. So talking to, uh. Judge Nemec, he suggested, um. A new attorney, uh, I think it's Diane Cole.
Diane.
Diane Cole, Diane Cole out of Baki Norman. And, uh, instead of Angela Olsen's rate, it went to two hundred and fifty an hour. Uh, Diane Cole is at a hundred and eighty-five an hour and supported by. Judge Nemec and.
Hundred and eighty-five with the municipal court and if it gets up to circuit court. And I think she was at. Two hundred and. One or something. It's in the fee agreement.
Well, then, uh, her rates were gonna go up. February first, so I'm gonna make sure we get it done before the rates run up. So I wanna make a motion to change. To. Diane Cole out of Baki Norman. Effective, uh, February first.
Second.
First and second, any further discussion?
Yeah, I don't have enough information, so I can't vote on this.
The information on it is that the current coun- council is going from up to two fifty an hour. For services provided and there's a, a proposed, um. A proposed individual that's willing to take on that same, uh, thing for a hundred and eighty-five an hour. That same, uh, task for. Seventy dollars an hour less.
I get that there's a money value assigned to it, but you're not just gonna sign off on someone I don't even, never even done any, taking on or any information. And what you said was, this was Judge Nemec's recommendation, but roll call vote, Donnie?
Hi.
Caleb?
I'm staying.
Chris?
Hi.
Chris?
I'd like more information.
I'm staying.
No.
Myself, I.
I, what else?
Stating, okay. So what's that? Three eyes.
Three eyes.
They're staying, so passes. Business discussion possible approval class A beer and class A liquor license for Speedway. My understanding, it's under new ownership and they're keeping the same agent of basing bottle setting. This goes through public safety. But I'm guessing since it's the same agent that it's approved by. By Joel.
Yes, yeah.
Like make motion to approve the class A beer and class A liquor license for the Speedway. Your first and a second discussion.
Did this go through?
It's not, it's just changing the group of investors change for Speedway. So the agent is still the same, which is the owner of Speedway has changed.
So it's more just a formality.
Correct.
All in favor?
Hi.
Oppose, same side. Discussion possible approval resolution changing the February village board meeting date. Asia, what did you find out with your research on that? Are we able to use the library on that same day or?
Yeah, so I, this will need to be changed if everyone's aware because of the spring primary is scheduled for that same date. And so Mike asked me to check with the library if they're available. There is space available there. However, I just wanted to note that. Staff is not available to help that day because we'll be with elections and we also have some board members that serve as election workers, so they would. Either likely not be available for a board meeting or that would hinder their availability to help with. Working the election.
Yeah. Can you just push it back? I would rather, I'd rather not because I think that would be. So we lose two board members.
So I'd like to propose, because right now, those I put a calendar, like a draft calendar in your packet too, so you can. Look at the dates. Right now, the plan commission is at first Thursday on February first. And then because of the way the language reads, how our committee meetings happen the second week. The week of the fifth, right now, there would be nothing. Because the committee meetings would be scheduled for the twelfth and the fourteenth. So I would propose that we move those up to the fifth and the seventh. And then the village board meeting be either held the fif- thirteenth or the fifteenth.
Or we push back the village board meeting to the twenty.
Now just, hold on. So I I think it's important that we have. A meeting prior to the election because if we have any workers that need to be approved by the board prior to the election. That those could be covered in a village board meeting. Prior to the twentieth. So I I don't think it'd be in our best interest to move it to after the election.
Public safety guys, any conflict with the changing into the fifth? Public Works, any any conflict changing into the seven?
I'm good.
I'm good.
All right, and Personnel and Finance on seventh, I'm good. Chris, good. Okay, we change that and then everybody. Good for the. Thirteenth, my calendar says it's Mardi Gras that day.
How was that gonna reflect with us, changing it all at this meeting or do we have to change them in committee meetings for those other? You know, like public safety and all that stuff.
I think we're just doing it.
The ordinance doesn't read specifically about committee meetings needing to be changed by resolution. It just states about the village board meeting day needing to be changed by resolution.
I'd like to make a motion to change the, for the February, change the public safety. Meeting to Monday, the fifth. Public Works to Wednesday, the seventh at five thirty. And then the Personnel and Finance at seven o'clock on the seventh. And the regular board meeting to Tuesday, the thirteenth at six o'clock P M.
Second.
First and a second, further discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Oppose, same side. You. Discussion possible approval ordinance two dash two dash fourteen, order of business at meetings. Agenda recognition of visitors. So this. This was something that Asia. Brought to us to have a consent agenda. Do you want to speak to?
Sure, so I'd actually just like to start at the the top of that ordinance. Because as I was looking at this ordinance and I saw that there's some language around when the agenda is shared and posted. So I think it would be advantageous for us to take this time to look at that also. So. It's, the ordinance currently states that prior to posting the final agenda that I would send out. A preliminary agenda. I added the language by noon on Thursday. Proceeding irregularly scheduled board meeting because it didn't specify a time prior. And then. It also states that any items would need to be. Filed or sent to me by noon on the Friday prior to a meeting. That currently isn't being done necessarily. And then further, it states that anything afternoon on Friday, unless it's deemed an emergency by the president. Would not be placed on the agenda. Again, that's not currently happening. But it's in the ordinance and so I'd like it to happen. I just wanted to make it known that that's currently what's in place.
They're basically saying, you know, they'll put a preliminary out and give us twenty four hours to, you know, add any additions.
Yes. And in my previous experience with putting together agendas. Something similar was established of a timeline. And there was about a one month learning curve that took place and then everyone was kind of on the same page. And items weren't missed. There was some clarity for board members around what was on the agenda. It made a lot less running for us that were creating the agenda to be posting the updates and those types of things. So I think it would be in the best interest of not only staff here, but for you guys as a board. So you know exactly what's coming on Tuesday, you know, by noon on Friday, and so there aren't any surprises. So. Then that leads kind of into the consent agenda. Proposal. Some of the items that we take care of here are routine every month, the minutes. The bills. One could even say that our. Items that come from committees, some of them are fairly routine. And so those could be addressed in one motion under a consent agenda. At any point, a trustee could request to remove an item from the consent agenda. For it to have its own discussion. And that would just be done. And Paul, maybe you can correct me here if I'm wrong, but. When a motion is made to approve the consent agenda, at that point, a trustee could say. They would want to remove a specific item. For more discussion.
Yep, yep, you can either approve all of them or you could approve. One, two, and five, then pull the other two. It's a tool to. Speed things up and make meetings more efficient.
Anything else you want to add?
Um, I think that was it.
Like to make a motion to. Change ordinance two dash two dash fourteen, the order of business at meetings. To the new language that Asia has provided for us.
Second.
First and second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Oppose, same side. Discussion possible approval of. Election inspectors.
This is just an updated list with the latest addition noted at the bottom.
Like to make a motion to approve the election inspectors. First and second, further discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
We got two substitutions for Skubak and Brandon Brown. We are election officials. Discussion possible approval ordinance two dash four dash six, economic development. Bob, if you want to speak to this.
Sure, happy to. Uh, we currently have an economic development committee that's been inactive like prior to COVID. I talked to Mike about keeping that re- standing, which. The ordinance, as it reads right now. It's fairly specific on who can be on this committee, which. Makes it a little bit difficult to find individuals, like for instance, one is a banker. As bankers come and go, we we kind of lose relationships with them, so. And there's just some that simply don't want to take any more meetings. We remember, for example, this, we're good. So.
Is that what you were thinking?
Just making it, you know, like plan commission, we don't require any special set of skills or. You know, requirements on occupation. Obviously. What I'm looking for is just. People that have been said that have been involved with developments before, have been involved with, you know, anything. E-commerce type of. You know, businesses that can bring ideas and that's really what the objective is, is. They have a committee that shares ideas, potentially has some networking with other folks. There's a lot of people that don't necessarily live in the community that would, I think, be a great benefit to. Assisting us in this and have. A lot of connections that would obviously help, you know, in my position. It also takes a lot of. Decision making off of my point, we can say this came out of this committee and that's really what. I would prefer. So. I kind of. Tweeted some language. Yeah, the older jet ordinance and then you have the new one. Simply stating that village president builds trustee. Economic development director and then for civilian members. Preferably, they they live in the. The general area, but. Normal that we always make a requirement. But really, the functions of the committee are changing. Removing the specificity of who can be on that.
I'd like to make a motion to. Change our current. Ordinance two dash four dash six to. Bob Gunther's current. Language. And hopefully we can. Build those positions fast. We have a lot of work to do.
Thank you.
First and a second, further discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Oppose, same side.
I'm gonna abstain on this one.
Okay, extension. Need to close session pursuant to Wisconsin, with stats nineteen point eight five, period one, period eight. Deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, the investing of public funds or conducting others specified public business. Whether competitive or bargaining reasons for your closed session. Pineville Development Agreement, a new village owned lot at one twenty, one twenty eighth Spring Street. And so at this time, we're in close, actually, roll call, the closed session. Motion made, motion. Now, I'll make the motion. Second. Discussion, sorry, all in favor? There you go.
Chris Dubak, I?
Myself, yes.
Great, right?
All right, we are in closed session. Eight five P M. Asia, do you want to repeat those? Emotions?
I only have the one formal motion. I don't, I didn't. Hear a specific motion for the other one, but. For the developers agreement, there was a motion. By Mike. To approve the developers agreement for Pineville Phase One. With understanding that staff will draft and approve a final exhibits.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Oppose, same side.
Josh, I'd like to make a motion for the. Agreement with wheelhouse copied for the lease of their property. With a lease agreement or property? Our property, yes, the village property.
In the amount of one hundred and fifty dollars.
Second.
Josh, I come first, give a government second discussion.
Line and adjustment.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
I am going to abstain because of the tendencies. And for our water and sewer bills.
Brandon Crumming motion to approve water and sewer bill to connect it.
My second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Hi.
All the same side.
Brandon Crum, motion to adjourn.
Third second? First and second, discussion, all favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Right, we are ending our meeting at eight forty seven P M. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.